Entertainer motion to clear an open meeting.
I see move.
It's been first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Meeting is open. The Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there if you care to read that. Roll call, Vicky.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Trenton.
Yep.
Krista.
Here.
Jason is excused. And myself here. Okay, we will. When do we want to make the motion to adjust it?
Um, any time right now during item six. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, we want to add one item to the agenda about purchasing the van, right?
Yeah, the reason that we consider this to be kind of of an emergency nature is, um, I have sent an email out of the blue from a friend of mine who works for Mid State Bus in Wayne, and he blasted out an email to all schools whose school colored a red. And he had a picture of two transit vans, I've since sent those to you, that he said these just became available to the school that bought them, backed out, don't know the details of that, but he just said these are available to several vendors, myself included. Is anybody interested? Well, we are interested. And so I started a conversation with him, found out that it's over the budgeted amount that you just proved last month, but still wanted to see if we could have conversation about it. Sent you some information, there's a last minute development on it, but a visit with Mr. Sauer and he thought was best probably just to add an agenda item, talk about it, transparency, and decide if indeed we wanted to spend a few thousand more than we budgeted. So, uh, I would recommend that we add item seventeen as an action item.
I'll make a motion to adjust the school board agenda to add item number seventeen regarding the van.
Second. All right, Trenton.
Yes.
Krista.
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
All right, you can now throw away these two first things of agenda. And the other three. Okay, now we're on the consent agenda, for the consent agenda. Start out with last month's agenda. If they found anything that wasn't right, it'd be a surprise to me. Yeah, if there's nothing on there, we'll move on to the... I said agenda, that was the minutes. We're all right with the minutes. Okay, financial reports.
So is the point seven oh percent correct for Madison County Bank? Didn't it go up for the flux of the CD?
Do nine eighteen, oh, that one.
Yeah, I think I had a conversation with Brian.
I know you did.
Uh, so, yeah, we just made a wrong figure, I'm gonna check on that.
Okay.
Because I know it's going up.
Well, I hope so.
But if it's gonna go up two, I don't know.
I hope so.
But...
Yes, if you check on that one.
Yeah, it has to be like...
I see we're a little above our spending from a year ago.
After one month?
Yeah. Yeah. I just don't want that...
Check in with me in eleven months.
I just hope it doesn't continue at, you know, that rate for the next few months.
Yeah, well, let's see, when we get to, yeah, claims, I guess we can look and see if there's been anything in particular this month that came through. Um, I know we did have our math testing, our John Baylor expenses in our ESU. Or you've noticed, I'm sure, I've definitely had a little bit, our ESU bill was, well, twenty-five thousand, I think.
Yeah, and that was the nurse's contract and the John Baylor and a lot of stuff like that.
Which would have been last year at the same time too, but, you know, some of the things just could be, uh...
Well, one thing I can look at, if you look in the past, we've been under month over month over month to under what we were the previous year. So I would assume that once in a while we're gonna be over. As long as it's not a current...
I was just surprised it was almost a percent over.
Just see if we're coming up with that, Trenton.
Yes.
Percentage compared to last year. Okay, there's nothing with financials, we'll look at the claims.
Can I ask what banners or signs we had from Love Science and...
Yeah, the Target Gym. Yeah, been with Target Gym lately, look up the bleachers. Uh, we added our school name all, all the way up on the back, behind the bleachers, which adds something back there, just continued to have that, you know, dress up that gym. Uh, and then, uh, then if you look at the stage on the back, when we had an event up on the stage, we bought a banner to hang on the back of the stage on back curtains. Just so we have something besides just that solid black backdrop. We had moved the one that is identical to the, to the sign on the front, to the south side, that hangs in between the senior composites, and we had moved that back and thought that looked good. Can't remember if it was on or tonight or something last year, uh, that we put that up there. And, um, been listening to Vic and I've talked about getting something that'd be more, a little more permanent, uh, for back there on the street.
What does that banner say, or?
Uh, I will go grab it, uh, for you to, for you to see. It's in Mississauga.
Are we close to being done with signs?
Oh.
We're running out of law space, so...
I've heard a lot of comments that maybe enough's enough.
Well, it'll start paying pretty soon, I asked her. Um, I have a question, there's two pretty good sized bills here on yearbooks, is there split payment on that or something?
That would be activities, I have to... I think, what were the split payments? Thirty, I think it was like thirty four hundred dollars total.
Uh, one's thirty-two hundred.
Yeah.
And one's forty-three.
Yeah, so it's over five thousand.
I have, we have to ask names.
Hannah or Michelle.
Or Michelle, yeah.
And they're not that far apart from each other, so...
Yearbooks are necessary, any schools, any school that talks about getting rid of yearbooks, that's usually, you know, the community usually puts a tight bash on that. But they're, they're losers.
How much are they running?
I think forty bucks.
Forty-five, if you put your name on it.
Forty-five, yeah.
But it's a break even for the school, isn't it? Don't we charge a student something cost us? Or not?
Yeah, I don't know.
I guess I don't...
Yeah, I think every school that I've, that I've been to, their yearbook budget is generally subsidized by the school district, you know? I like our yearbook, I think they do, I think Miss Melissa's great job with it. But they're, they're kind of tough, not every kid buys one into the order. But getting rid of this...
That's the line, I don't want to get rid of them.
Yeah, I would hate to get rid of them, I just wondered how many, you know, yearbooks that was, or...
Sounds like they could last.
Be careful what you're writing.
Yeah, you gotta hide them. So you carpeted the elementary office across the street, both offices?
Yes.
Seems like a lot of money if you just did the little, little one.
Yeah, that was the principal's office and Mrs. Ross's.
That included, in it, that rest?
Yeah.
Well, there's two in there, there's Baze Bava and then there's Green.
They're both for the same, same carpet?
Fix the hole in the corner of that one office?
Yeah, they'll drop something in there.
Yeah, I know that carpet was in bad shape, seems like a lot of money for that area. Anybody else on claims, or are they all right with it?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. For now, portion of our agenda set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we'll advise you when that five minute time period has elapsed. Please remember, this is a public meeting, for the conduct of the business of the Plankton Public School District, offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised, there is no legal protection for any comments on... Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Okay, committee review of the course. Discussion items. Creighton's request for junior high football.
Kevin, uh, kind of brought this to your attention a month or maybe even two months ago. They, from what I understand, uh, they have two seventh graders that play football. So next year they anticipate two eighth graders, uh, and they only have four boys in the sixth grade class. So, they would not, they can't feel they're going to be right. And so, um, we were approached about, I don't, not a co-op necessarily, but, can we come and play football with you guys? Which essentially was how I responded to them, that we'd be happy to have you. This is when we practice, um, and I even went so far as to say, you know, you wouldn't need to provide a coach. That was the part, we got a little pushback on, so they'd have to drive them over anyway and probably would come over with a coach. So I, you know, I, I don't, that shouldn't be a deal breaker when we're just talking about junior high football, but essentially I said they would wear a Plankton Pirate uniform. We'd check out the equipment to them, whether we would need to consider, okay, are we gonna charge them for using our equipment? Or, uh, any of that kind of business? I guess I think it'd just be a good faith, you know, for junior high football, if they would come in and have the experience. Then provide the coach, I don't know what their expectations might be about what that person would coach and what their influence would be in that kind of business. We certainly wouldn't want it to turn into a, you know, they, their coach thinks this guy should start or play more in this way, you know, run this kind of offense and that kind of business. So I think that could probably easily be worked out. But, uh, they're having that conversation tonight at their board meeting, from what I understand. And a decision needs to be made really kind of soon because you have to work on a schedule. So, uh, we will lose one game next year, um, because Creighton is, we're playing Creighton right now, so we'll lose that game. And so we need to pick up two games, uh, or possibly three if we wanted to go to a five game schedule. But you need to, the, the teams that are on Creighton's junior high schedule right now, you know, they're always looking a year in advance, either junior high school, so... Just, I guess, kind of bringing up speed, have some discussion, see what your thoughts are on that, or expectations. I'd, I'd be happy to have their boys come over here and, and be able to participate in football, rather than come here and then go up to Vertiv or local field or anywhere else for that matter.
What are we looking at, roughly, for boys next year?
Uh, for us?
Yeah.
For us, we're gonna be pushing closer to eighteen. Uh, we've got good numbers, we've got good boy numbers coming up consistently, um, now for, for years to come, so...
So if you ever look at playing eleven man at junior high, if you think they're gonna eventually, possibly be back to eleven man, even though they played eight man at high school?
Yeah, I don't think we'd want to do that. We, as long as we're gonna be eight man at high school, which we probably are, for, yeah, I don't anticipate ever moving back to eleven. I think we might move it back to D one from D two in a couple of cycles. So, so, yeah, I mean, eight man is pretty much the way it is unless we would, if we're co-op with another school or two teams, uh, at some point.
So if they supply a coach, would that mean that we would not have to pay one less coach?
Uh, I think it'd be, right now we pay two coaches.
Right.
Uh, we have three, we have three guys, but we're only paying two coaches.
Right.
I think it'd be advantageous to have three coaches. I wouldn't recommend that we get rid of one of ours.
No.
I wouldn't. So I, I, I like the arrangement we have, but right now it's complicated because our junior high staff is also our high school staff. So there, I, it's all right, we'll, we'll need to, that'll need to work by the next fall than it is from now until the end of the year. The junior high season ends next Monday, uh, you know, so that won't be an issue after next Monday.
That gives us more options going into next year too, if we have another coach available from there. You know, if we can't come up with three, we can only come up with one or two, why would we still have an extra one?
Yep.
You know, just as long as they know that we'll have the head coach. I mean, our, one of our coaches will be the head coach.
Yeah.
And as far as the equipment goes, you know, I don't, apparently you don't charge them, we just make sure if something happens up there with their uniform, that they'll be responsible. And it's the same rules as our kids' meter.
Yeah, if we were going somewhere else, it'd be what I'm sure would be expected of us, so...
But that works for them to have practice during school, bring the kids down?
They must have longer class periods then.
That didn't seem to be a deal breaker, that didn't seem to be a problem.
Yeah.
That practices from two forty-five to, to three forty, and then longer, two days a week. We've been practicing, you know, forty-five minutes after school, two days a week, which we want to continue.
As long as they're willing to bring their kids down, I think it's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think a couple of sixth grade boys from Creighton currently play on our junior pirate program. I think they're sixth graders, could be a fifth grader, but I, I was told there are two Creighton kids that play on our junior pirate team. Would make sense that maybe they were sixth graders, because you know that they're low in sixth grade boy members. So there's all, they already will know some of those boys, I mean, so it seems to be, to me, would be the best option for them, so, uh, sure.
Kind of the end of the, right, and what, I mean, what happens if come next year their boys decide they don't want to come down here? We're not gonna have anything legally...
No, I mean, no, no. It's just kind of a friendly agreement.
And we don't need to vote on this or anything else?
No, I just certainly wanted to gauge your level of support, um, and be able to share with them that our board has, you know, a pretty strong, you know, approval and would be, you know, happy to, happy to have you, unless, unless we have one member just arriving, that feels different.
Not putting you on the spot here. Talking about junior high football next year, Creighton's gonna have more kids possible. They've negated us, we all...
It's just a discussion, I haven't...
I seen that was on, what the coaches think.
No, yeah, they're, like, bring them on, as long as, but, but, we're the coaches, is what the coaches think.
Is this a co-op, or are they just coming down here to play, or something?
Coming to put on our helmet and uniform and...
Bringing them up to coach.
I suppose they could have their own shoulder pads and they could have their own...
Yeah.
Yeah, that would probably be, yeah. What color pants and a little match, and obviously a helmet. They could...
And they're okay with that?
Outfit, yeah. They just wanted to provide a coach, because initially I said, we got the coaches coming. But they're like, we gotta drive them in anyway. So, and we have somebody contribute to the coaching staff. So that seemed to me to be the only thing that they, you know, would expect, that they could provide a coach for their...
Makes sense, they want a little, I mean, they want a little say, but it looks like...
Yeah, they want to know how their kids are doing, try to bring it down anyhow.
Yep.
And you can't ever have too many coaches on there.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, number nine, action items. Consider, take possible action on revising board policy number one zero zero five point one two, Title One, Parents and Family Member Engagement.
Okay, as, as I mentioned in the fact, it could literally be a series of policy, uh, policies that need to change as a result of statute, languages that change. This is one where I didn't have any red line for you, because it almost changed completely. If you went and looked at your current one double oh five point one two and compared it with this, you know, you'd drive yourself crazy really trying to figure out what the language difference is. It, honestly, it's not anything that's gonna really change much in our practice, in our Title One, uh, program. It's just some of the change has to do with ESSA. NCLB died, was replaced by ESSA. So a lot of things, sometimes, you know, that's, it's something as simple as that, just getting rid of no child left behind acronym and adding the every student succeeds acronym. And in fact, that's in the first line there. So it's just designed to make sure that our parents have every notification and every opportunity to participate in their child's education, especially if they receive entitlement services, those are federal funds. And so when anything's tied to the federal government, there should be more strings attached. So it's really kind of formalized, that's most of the policy revision.
Okay, any questions? Does it entertain a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we accept the BOE policy one zero zero five dot one two, Title One, Parents and Family Member Engagement as revised, revised.
Second?
No second to that.
Okay, it's been first and second, myself, yes.
Yes.
Mike. Jason.
Yeah.
Krista.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Consider, take possible action on revising board policy number eight oh two point zero seven, School Food Procurement.
The only changes on this are the figures, so if you look down on the right hand side, about a third of the way down, you see two hundred and fifty thousand written twice. The old policy was a hundred and fifty thousand, so they increased it by a hundred thousand. And then on the micro purchases procedure, down just a little bit, about halfway down, the ten thousand dollar figure, the original policy figure was thirty-five hundred, so they just increased those amounts.
Seems like a lot.
And for, for, for small schools, you know, it's not gonna make a difference. And because their purchasing power's not that great anyway.
Does this work easier than it seems like it would once you get it all set up? Maybe you know what I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of...
Our, the fine people that we pay, they keep our policies updated, just push these out to us and...
But I mean, as far as the cooks keeping all these records and doing all this, the way that says it has to be done.
Because the small purchase procedures, I mean, do we get, you know, the three vendors out there to get bids from?
There are.
And so we inform them of writing?
Cisco Cashway and, uh, are two big ones, and there's one other big one. But generally, a school finds their vendor and you go with them all the time. And, you know, if we, you know, Mary would say, yeah, I check from time to time.
Why, you see, you're supposed to write, formally writing?
Yeah, and she has that, you know, documentation that, yeah, I've, I mean, she, she gets audited every year and they get inspected every year. But I think we probably have the same commodities vendor for everything. We don't get this from this vendor and this from that, I mean, obviously, we get as much as, we get everything from one vendor at the best price.
So do you know where we're at, under that two hundred and fifty thousand?
I, I don't know. I don't know where, but I know we're not at court money. So, I mean, I honestly, I probably could have scrapped this policy, and it really doesn't hardly apply, but I thought we better have the latest one that any actually...
Remember, we don't have a choice on any of this working, it's just the way it is.
So she has a copy of this policy, so she knows what...
Oh, she will, tomorrow.
Well, I mean, she's got a current one, but...
Apparently she's doing what she needs to do, she gets audited every year, so... I suppose once we get it all set up, it's probably gonna be tough, it's gonna be...
I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, Board of Education Policy eight zero two point zero seven, School Food Procurement as revised.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, number second, myself, yes, Jason.
Yes.
Trenton.
Yes.
Krista.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number eleven, consider and take possible action on revising board policy number four oh three point zero two, Child Abuse Reporting.
Yeah, on this one you will see the, the added language. So, you know, as you read it, you know, you try to determine what the rationale was for that, I guess, but, those are just changes in statute.
So these are all coming down from the state, now this is of our own, of your recommendation? Well, there's getting rich, is what it is.
So the second, the first paragraph to second to last line, volunteers participate in?
Participate.
I mean, it needs to be...
Never said no.
So it's participation?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if it was participate in or participate.
Yeah, entertain a motion on that.
I make the motion that we accept the Board of Education Policy four oh three point four two, Child Abuse Reporting as revised.
Second.
Second.
First and second, Krista.
Yes.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Mike. Vicky.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Number twelve, consider and take possible action on revising board policy number four oh four point zero six, Harassment by Employees.
I think a big part of it is on page two, where you're, uh, required to complete your investigation within ten weeks of your report. So that puts it, puts it in. Don't repeat the fire a little bit to get something done.
That, that is massive change, though.
Well, I think everything that's underlined is in addition to the original. You have...
The first one isn't the original?
No, that'd be the, that's the, that's the new fresh language, yes.
So these are the ones we're actually putting in our book, or are we gonna get new ones?
Well, you can, but they've got the numbers on top of it, you know, I've got number twelve on it, for example.
Okay.
So, but also what I'll want to do is I'll want to put under the bottom, under revise of the history, so...
So Kelly will be bringing us new ones next month.
Yeah. But you'll have new ones at next one's, of all these new policies with today's name key. I know you like to keep that book up. No, that's important.
So the first copy of this isn't necessarily what's in here, this is what's good and...
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
I see what you're saying, it would, you know, it could have been the, the old copy and then the red line copy.
Yeah.
You know, which would show you the changes.
Yeah, that's why I asked what you wanted us to put this in here before I threw it away, because usually I throw these away or file them.
Sure.
I do have copies.
I know what you mean.
I've got over two years' worth of these back. Okay, any motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we accept board policy number four oh four point oh six, Harassment of Employees, Plans Revised.
Second. It's the first and second, Vicky.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Krista.
Yes.
Yes.
Jason. Yes. Motion carries. Thirteen, consider and take possible action on revising board policy number five oh four point one eight, Harassment by Students. Are we all missing page two or three on the first? Are they under our order?
I got it.
I got it.
One is thirty-two, and I got it. Outside this line. Okay, one on three, I guess, oh, yeah, maybe I missed some pages. So which one's the first, three or three?
I think they're the same, I think the three threes are exactly, no, sorry, another... Your, your first three of three starts with superintendent.
Sure.
Your second three of three starts with head shell.
Yeah, if there's no discussion on that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we revise Paul's Board of Education Policy five oh four, put one, harassment by students.
Second.
Second.
First and second, Jason.
Yes.
Trenton.
Yes.
Krista. Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Number fourteen, consider and take possible action on revising Board of Education Policy number five oh five point zero three, Suspension and Expulsion of Students. Number fourteen, consider and take possible action on revising Board of Education policy number five oh five point zero three suspension and expulsion of students.
This one outlines, uh, yes, the language of an emergency exclusion, which gives administration the right to suspend a student immediately regardless of IDK. Because usually if you get an IDK, then there's a whole different set, whole different threshold kicks in to suspend a student immediately from school if they have, some type of dangerous communicable disease transmitted through normal school contacts, or if a student poses a clear threat to the physical safety of himself or herself, or is so extremely disruptive to make temporary removal necessary to preserve the rights of other students. So that's a, a judgment decision a lot of times, unless the, the communicable disease, hopefully a neurosis, can be implicated or something. But if, so you get a kid that's so disruptive, you can send them out and they can't come back until they get cleared by a medical professional. Uh, whether it's a medical, uh, mental health, medical professional, or a practicing medical doctor. So that language is spelled out in there, uh, as is a student who is in violation of the law, school's rights to suspend or expel if a student is in violation of, local civic law, which is on four of five, so three big paragraphs add to this policy.
So what would be the procedure if you were gonna expel a student immediately for health?
You wouldn't expel, so it would be a suspension first.
Or suspension, but if you were gonna kick him out of school immediately.
Yeah.
And so, and if the parents say, well, we can't, we don't have anybody to come get him.
Yeah.
Tell you to go to the school, that you just put in your office, or do whatever you have to do.
Well, obviously, if we needed a student in emergency excluded, uh, we, we, and, and they didn't have anywhere to go, we'd probably get a quarantine and then...
It's never happened there.
I'll make the motion that we adopt Board of Education policy five oh four point twelve regulated, draw suspension and expulsion of students five oh five point three.
Zero three.
Second?
Okay, it's been first and second, and myself, yes. Mickey?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Yes.
Jason, yes, motion carries. Fifteen, consider and take possible action on adopting Board of Education policy number five oh four point one two regulated electronic devices. And this is the first of two readings, so there'll be no votes.
Um, as, um, the language that N A S B sent with regard to this, all districts include their specific student rules related to cell phone use in their handbook, but due to changes in technology and increasing abuses of using cell phones to record or report on others in the schools, uh, they've added, you know, some language to this policy, which we never had. You know, every school has a, a cell phone policy, but it's usually just prohibiting it during certain times of crisis. Uh, but because there's, you know, kids can now record and take pictures, uh, at all times in, in prohibited spaces like a bathroom or locker room, uh, we need something with a little more meat to it than just language in a handbook.
That is nice, the state can announce.
Okay, I agree.
So it's not up to us to everybody to decide what they wanna do or not wanna do?
I like the, the language in that second paragraph, the prohibited devices shall include anything which is sufficiently annoying. I am sufficiently away? I need your apple watch.
Some days it might be the little bells on your sweater.
Again, this, yeah, this is just the first reading, second reading it becomes policy, so make sure that, if you approve first reading, uh, like it would publicly...
We still vote on it? We don't vote.
You, you vote on first reading, so it needs to pass a first reading and then, uh, pass a second reading, then it becomes policy.
Okay, I don't need a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept as a first reading Board of Education policy five oh four point one two regulated electronic devices as read.
Second?
Read.
Second?
I'll start, who's second?
Mike.
Okay.
The first and second, myself, yes. Vicki?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number sixteen, consider and take possible action on adopting Board of Education policy six oh four point one four reading instruction and improvement, first of two readings.
This is a result of any one of the more, uh, controversial or spoken about statutes that came out of the UNO CAM, certainly through the Education Committee, the Reading Improvement Act. It was actually tied to, uh, it wasn't even a standalone bill. This is the one where they were gonna retain you in third grade if you weren't at, and that was last year's bill, it came back, it was two years ago, it came back last year, they took that part out, cleaned up some things. Uh, still not gonna pass through committee, and they attached it as a rider to the cleanup bill. So if you wanted, you, so they passed this one, and this one, they just connected it to the bottom, which is just legislative hygienics. But it, it, you know, in schools, we don't let Lincoln telling us in plain view how we should work with students who are at risk of reading at grade level. You know, we know better than a bunch of legislators in Lincoln, right? So most every school in, in Nebraska really kind of opposes, uh, Lincoln telling us how to, how to teach and how to intervene when kids are at risk or are struggling, particularly in the area of reading. Uh, but this language is not, uh, it's not incredibly burdensome. Most of this we already do, most of this, all public schools already do, identify kids who are struggling and provide interventions. That's essentially what it does. Now, there's more accountability for schools to identify those kids, to document what those interventions are, uh, and to keep very close track of their reading progress, and if those interventions, if you don't see progress after a certain amount of time, you have to implement a different intervention. Most schools generally do that already. Uh, so, uh, this is, just, this has come out of all that. You guys have been aware for, for over a year that, that this is, that this is kinda common, there's just a little more pressure on schools to get kids to reading level by third grade, because all research shows, if you're not reading level at fourth grade, you will never catch up. Okay, and that is pretty scary. Because that's the most important skill we teach our kids, okay, is how to read. So, uh, we have made an investment in, uh, reading intervention, thirty-nine hundred dollars, and in fact, I had that on your claims. Thirty-nine hundred dollars of a forty-five hundred dollar bill was, uh, was paid for through state funds. Uh, so we've had, we have adopted early intervention and reading program, which aligns with, uh, with our treasures program, which is our, our, our regular, uh, programs. So we, we're training five teachers and two paras at the K three level. To, and so we'll have a systematic, consistent intervention program for our students. So regardless of the teacher, para, or the grade level, uh, they're gonna recognize their regular reading instruction and their intervention, their reading intervention. And so that, that's precisely what the state expects us to do, honestly. And so we're, you know, we're doing it, but we didn't need them to tell us, we need to do it.
So it talks a lot about getting the parents involved too, so they know what's going on. Is that something we've already been doing, or is that...
Oh, yeah, probably, uh, not, not as, not anymore formally than through this process right here, uh, you know, for parents to be aware. But when a student, when, when we do have a student who's not reading well, teachers communicate with parents. But, uh, having, uh, yeah, you know, specific, you know, parent meetings, but that kind of business we don't do, through parent-teacher conversation, just general teachers communicating with parents.
Okay, I heard that they're updating, because they might work with more at home if they know they're struggling a little bit, you know. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make the motion that we accept the first reading Board of Education policy six oh four point one four reading instruction improvement as read.
I'll start.
Myself, yes, Jason?
Yes.
Trenton?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
Mike? Seventeen, consider and take possible action to exceed the budget amount for the purchase of a new vehicle.
Okay, so as, you know, as I shared with you, I'm just gonna just fill in the, the gaps maybe for our guests out there on YouTube world and such, uh, we do need to replace, uh, a student van. Right now, we've got, uh, we've got two vehicles we could actually cycle out, one's a two thousand and ten Dodge Caravan with a hundred and forty-three thousand miles, another is a two thousand and four Suburban with about a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it. Mr. McCabe, if he were, if, if, uh, it were to be his choice, he'd get rid of the Dodge Caravan, keep the Suburban, because the Suburban has towing capability, uh, that, that we'd like to retain if possible. So during the budget process, I visited with the Budget Committee, they, I wanted to budget funds for a ten-passenger student van. The last one we got was a white van, about five years later, it was fourteen, the two thousand and fourteen. There are a lot of opportunities where we could probably take two vans instead of a bus, you know, a handful or so, uh, throughout the year, maybe a handful or more, actually. So I wanted to budget for that, and the Budget Committee approved a forty thousand dollar, uh, line item for a new vehicle. Did some shopping with the friends at Woodhouse. As most folks know, they shot us a sweet deal a year ago for the purchase of a new Fed van and administrative vehicle, essentially. I went back to the, I, I didn't, I didn't go to Lance directly, uh, because I did communicate with him prior to our alumni event at the golf course. Didn't necessarily ask for something, but, uh, wanted to see if he would participate in that event. Didn't hear back from him, that's fine. Uh, contacted the salesman that I worked with a year ago. Uh, he connected me with another individual that was part of that sale, told him what we were interested in. And he shot back to me a, a, a price that didn't appear to be, you know, discounted like the previous one. So I was kinda in an awkward spot, really. I, I, I just said, we just, you know, really appreciated the business last time. I assumed that he was aware of the, uh, the deal that, that Lance had, had, had offered us, but, uh, and then they didn't have the color. I wanted a red one, and the Woodhouse didn't have a red one. I liked this Transit, I saw one over a year ago that a school had, and so I just kinda had my sight on a Ford Transit. So then things kinda cooled. I told the gentleman at, at Woodhouse, I said, if you find one, you'll let me know. But I'd really like a red, I didn't give any specific features, I just said, you know, it's for school student use, so you could just about imagine. He said, well, you could probably go online and build one, we could probably put it together for you. Not forty-eight hours later, I heard from a friend of mine who works in that state bus, who said, I have two of these, school ordered, backed out on them, is anybody interested? So I immediately said, I'm interested, let me see, what do you, what do you got on it? So he sends me all these specs and details, I've sent four of those to you. It is, uh, a little, it is definitely pricey. Has some safety features on it, though, that our other van doesn't like. For example, uh, rearview camera, notification systems, uh, lane alert system, uh, canopy airbags. Probably, you know, that, that's one thing you probably could justify maybe spending a little more for, if we're gonna put six to eight to ten kids in here for the next ten years. And drive them a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand miles, who knows? So, yeah, if I'd have built one, would I have built it with those features? Probably not, because I'd probably try to keep it under the budgeted amount. This vehicle is available to us for forty-three thousand dollars. Was forty-five, uh, I got an email today, uh, that, uh, didn't realize that we, that the education discount was not on there, uh, that you can get through for, uh, two thousand dollars. So it's a, kind of a take it or leave it at, at forty-three.
What do you think we'll get out of a trade for one of those?
Um, wouldn't be, we wouldn't be trading. We, if, if we wanted to get rid of the two thousand and ten, well, a two thousand and ten, a hundred and forty-three thousand miles Dodge Caravan, I, I don't know, a couple thousand bucks, I, I don't know what they, what they go for.
What do you want to go for?
Would we save money over the course of the years in not, in, in, uh, not taking a bus five times, because we can take these two vehicles, would that save us a hundred and fifty bucks a trip? You know, times five, or, you know, I don't know, you could, we could try to nickel and dime our way down to how much is it gonna save us? I guess, you know, the bottom line is, do we really think it's necessary? Well, we budgeted, we did approve forty thousand dollars for a new vehicle. Forty-three thousand dollars is a whole lot of money for a van, and I absolutely understand that. Uh, it's, it's a, it, it's got individual bucket seats as opposed to row seats, they're leather seats, I, I mean, but we didn't have a choice on some of those features. We can leave it, you know, sell it to somebody else who has new school colors or red. It has a mid-high ceiling, so if you've seen the Molsol vehicle, it is, it's the same make, it just has a higher ceiling. You can, so our, our kids will practically be able to stand up inside of it. Do they need to be able to stand up inside of it? No, but, uh, I did check to see if we could conceivably fabricate luggage carriers above their heads like you have in buses, but, uh, that would, um, it's not fabricated for that, so that's probably...
Lost your airbags, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah, and it was probably an issue too. Yeah, it was initially, could they, could they stuff a bag way up there, but I could just, just to...
There's a little room behind the backseat, even though there's ten seats in there, I mean, not a lot, but they could get a few duffel bags or a...
If it's, if it's nine basketball players, you could probably fit nine guys in your bags, you know.
Under the seats.
Yeah, and so, at, at any rate...
Doesn't have an edge.
I had a visit with Mr. Salz, and we decided this probably just be a good conversation to bring in board, uh, just because it would be spending more than what's left.
I was curious about this price, whether this was less price or what, if there was a special deal, so I got online and built this, I think we both did. And it's a little tough, didn't know exactly how to do that, but I came out with exactly the same price, the forty-five thousand charges. But I don't know when you build online, whether that's less price or is that what you'd be able to buy it for, so, still don't really know anything, but I came out with the same number, so, whatever that tells you, but...
Could you, uh, and, and this isn't Woodhouse?
No. No, I emailed them first thing this morning.
Could you send it to Woodhouse and say, what can you get us this vehicle for?
I did. Uh, and, you know, they're, you know, they're, uh, that, you need to get back with me a couple of weeks ago with, you know, I had, you know, another question about something, of course, I only get a thousand customers a day, and that's fine. And that's something to consider too, they, they've been so good, just would love to give them more business. But, and they, they, this is just a, this fell into my, fell into my... You know, quite literally, so I wanted to consider it.
So, I guess when you contacted Woodhouse, did you ask them to price this one, or did you ask, send them this and ask them this was...
I sent them, I sent them this sticker.
A good price.
I sent them this sticker, and I said, we're, I, I said, this vehicle is available for us. What could you, like, say, vehicle, could you meet this price, match this price, whatever? Didn't, didn't get that.
So they know what we are looking for. And that's been a couple of days, hasn't it, so it's not like...
Well, I talked to, I talked to him last week briefly, but specifically, I sent him this, sent that to him this morning.
So we take the extra money and say, I would depreciate it, like?
We could, I mean, it'll be three thousand dollars or something.
This vehicle probably have a better resale value down the road, with leather seats and all, I don't know, maybe.
We put less than ten thousand miles on our, uh, my, let me check real quick. We put eighty-seven hundred miles on the two thousand and fourteen. So I mean, I think we would, we'd definitely be under ten thousand here, so it'd be a low mileage vehicle, I mean, yeah, so years down the road, somebody probably not sitting at this table.
Got too many grandkids at one time.
I mean, if you've priced new vehicles lately, I mean, geez.
For what you're getting, you have a ten-passenger.
So do you use a Suburban?
Sparingly, but yes, it does get used for student activities. It's not the preferred vehicle.
What, what do you pull, that you want?
Maybe that one-act trailer.
And that's the only vehicle that we have that we can pull something on, besides, do we have a pickup yet?
No.
We don't have anything on it.
A Suburban would be our only tow vehicle. And in fact, you know, the, the, the Caravan would... And in fact, you know, the, the, the Caravan would, well, if we bring one of the Suburbs down, it would thank it, so. Perfect levels for, for that reason alone, tow some.
And you can't put a hitch on a van, too, but you just put that kind of money in a van just to pull a trailer once in a while.
Well, it's pretty darn close with dinner, but, I mean...
Yeah.
Before you're gonna totally out.
And to me, the leather would hold up better than the cloth seat, anyway. You almost cut it, why they don't stain and wipe off easier and all that.
It's black, though. Where's this at, Darren?
It's in Oswego, Kansas. Will be delivered at that price. And I'll get taken out for lunch.
Why you?
Really?
Aren't you gonna be gone that day?
That's a deal breaker.
Well, you gotta take the rest of us out.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll order the king cut.
Order the buffet and carry out for all of us.
I've been going to do that.
Well, I think we're close enough to price.
Well, the language that I put in your motion shows forty-five, so if you make a motion, you can adjust that to forty-three.
So do we have to change the budget?
No. Because I just said a simple line.
So it's a line item?
Yeah, you only need to change the budget if we were gonna change the, the whole bottom line, and so whatever three thousand dollars we spend, we won't, yeah, we won't spend. We'll spend three thousand dollars.
So then we won't need a new vehicle for a while?
Honestly, we should be set for years. Barring anything unexpected, we have some very reliable used vehicles yet. Our sped vehicle, which is fifty percent of that was paid for and that's fifty percent off, is, you know, gets eleven miles on every day, but it's zero, it's sixteen. You know, we're, we're really in pretty good shape now. Buses, we're in good shape for buses.
Is that after miles, though?
Which one? They're seventeen, I'm sorry. I did nineteen thousand, put twenty thousand miles on the sped vehicle.
Your contract comes up when?
December.
December, I was thinking November, so we got a couple months to save three grand on that.
Since your contract isn't frozen this year, we can lower it.
That's an evil look, I think.
That's the best thing I got.
The only negative, I guess I did read on this, is it's rear-wheel drive, so if you get the mud and stuff back, I can't imagine we're gonna be on country roads with it much. Unless we start rolling for a bus. We get down where we only have eight or ten kids on a bus.
Are you prohibited from driving it? I mean, no, no. But is there any bus route that has ten kids or less?
Uh, it could be, especially going home. We bring more kids here than we take home. So occasionally, I'll see the bus pull out with maybe, maybe ten, might be a valid.
You never know, yeah.
One thing with the van, then, you don't have to have your CDL.
No, class H, everybody can drive.
And we can start having coaches, if it works to go to an event, coaches can drive this, because they don't need a CDL, so that'll save us having a higher bus driver to drive.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of a new school van in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars.
Second, myself, yes, quickly?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, reports. Team Activity Directors' report.
I don't think we have any changes in privilege to schedule activities, so. We do have a, you know, one o'clock dismissal on Friday for a three o'clock game in Wenside on Friday.
So next week's game, will you be out early?
Next week's game, no school on Friday at all, so it's all break day.
And I understand the teachers have a choice?
Yes, the teachers on, on Friday, I mean, it's full contract day. It's one o'clock dismissal, so they stay till three thirty, which is fifteen minutes early, actually. Unless they're going to the game. If they're going to the game, they can leave at one fifteen. And Mrs. Novick's gonna take attendance at the game.
Wrestling is getting closer already.
We do get a wrestling district. We're going to Amherst for districts, so the team will stay in Kearney, so we'll have one night expense for our team overnight in Kearney. For the Amherst invite, the, the club pays for their overnight, but this will be the school tab.
But yes, district slash district.
I'm sorry, yes, district's a meeting, we stay at, at Lincoln, yes, I'm sorry. But we go to Amherst for the Amherst invite, so it's kind of nice to go there for districts as well.
But school doesn't pay for that invite fee, the wrestling club pays.
Yeah, that's like a, a voyeur arranged thing, I think, to head west a long ways to see somebody else.
Do they still go to Molsol, too, then?
No. That's, I think they swap the Amherst.
It's good, though, because then you see kids, you see a stadium.
Exactly.
Okay, president's report. Press conference report.
Don't, just move it to the end.
No, I gotta go to Northwood. Remember that conversation?
Yeah, that's right, everyone.
Yeah.
Okay, you're going.
Okay. Parent-teacher conferences, we had seventy-eight percent at high school and ninety-three at the elementary. Elementary's a little lower in some schools. It's a lot lower at the high school and in a lot of schools. We're talking like thirty and forty percent. So like seventy-eight percent, I still think it's probably a pretty good thing. Um, we finished our MAPS testing. The day that I had Mr. Sauer attempt to finalize it, we had a kindergarten show up, and we really needed to see her skill stuff. They have now been finalized, and she has been tested. Miles of Smiles was a huge success. The two ladies that come, they're absolutely amazing, so if you ever have a chance to come in and just see them in action, they're very good. Nurse Beth will give me the final numbers on how many kids we actually saw. Got ready, we'll do the seal-in program in the spring when they come. And so this is a great service to our family. Most of the kids walk away free toothbrush. They'll even give you one if you go in and ask, because I got a really bright pink one. Um, homecoming went well. Keaton and Kylie were our royalty, and I had seventy-one kids at the dance, and we had no issues, which we usually don't.
Did you have any issues with bringing it back down three tenths, so far?
No, nobody said a word. And actually, I had two people tell me that they were glad that we didn't leave kids out, so. And that'll just be, I think, something that we have to look at year by year, depending on how many kids we have, because I don't think that we should leave kids out. I don't think that's very kind. FAFSA night, we had seventeen people. It's up to the juniors and seniors and your parents. Um, I think we ended up having a conflict with something at school, so, oh, football practice got changed or something, so not all of the kids could go, but honestly, if you've ever done a FAFSA, how many of your kids ever sit down and help you with your FAFSA? Not many. We started John Baylor September twenty-sixth. Twenty-one of the twenty-five that signed up to take the course did show up, and we usually lose a lot of kids between the first night and the second night we've been signing up. And this year, we only had one drop, so we still have quite a few that are hanging out with us.
So do they have to attend every one of these?
Yes, because otherwise they miss two big sessions in the middle. And like Tony and I said, we don't have an option. We have to be here, and we expect them to show up and not just pick and choose, because if I could pick and choose when I was here, haha, I guess so. Um, the juniors took the ASDAB on October fifth, was that Friday? And they'll have their results later. They do it on a computer now, so it doesn't take four hours. It just takes them a half hour, or an hour, I mean, hour and a half, something like that. Um, Nurse Beth, we did vision screenings this year. Instead of looking into that big old machine where you look into it and, and she tests your eyes, now they take you into a room, and it's just a computer. They hold it up, measure your eyes, and it's a much more accurate reading of your abilities. It's a little lengthier process, just because it's more accurate, but it was good for our kids and the whole school got it. And it takes two of them, one lady, who's in charge of the nurses, was it Jill? Yeah, Jill came, and she helped with it. Um, lots of teachers in and out of the building. We have ERI training, executive function, and MTSS. MTSS will encompass all of those. Um, the ER, EIR is for K through three, K through two, something like that, depending on where that third grader might fall, and then we'll do a four, five, and six. It's called corrective reading. This is a lot of work. It takes a lot of implementation, and so we have to sit down and kinda look at some things. The end of the first quarter is October seventeenth. Yes, it is a Wednesday, but you have to try to keep those as equal as possible, because we have junior high kids that rotate around, and if you're off three and four and five days just because of a Friday, then those teachers don't get those kids, or, or the other side of that, they have them for too long. Um, National Honor Society and Teammates will sponsor a fun night for the Teammates kids on October eighteenth. Mrs. Earhart is in charge of that with Casey Johansson helping her.
You said that's for teammates?
Yep. Sophomores will go to a career day on October sixteenth at Wayne. Mrs. B will hold her annual preschool fun night October twenty-third. And we're already at one acts. They start dress rehearsal at the end of this month. That whole last week is dress rehearsal. And then their first performance is November third. And Conference Quarrel is in Creighton on November fifth.
I was on the all-call deal with the flu shots. You know anything about that? That's tomorrow.
Three to six?
I haven't talked to my kid, maybe he's got some information. Do they need to bring any?
Yeah, kids are grown, they're bringing information.
No, we, we don't get any information to hand out.
Well, I didn't know if they need to bring money, or how that's taken care of, or, yeah, or do they need insurance card, or does a doll have to accompany them, or?
Nope, have, send him with an insurance card.
Okay.
And he can fill it out. We'll call you if you need to be here.
And fifty bucks, right, Ben?
What?
And fifty bucks, right?
Uh, thirty-seven, thirty-seven is what it costs if you don't have insurance. Molsol will be right in there. Do you want me to go get him and remind him that he needs to do it? I'll make him go before me. He can be the guinea pig.
Come on crying.
I don't like, we don't let any elementary kids stand after me, because that freaks them out, because I kinda freak out about them. I may have pickup tomorrow night, so lots of things going on.
All right, thank you.
All right.
President's report. I don't have anything. If anyone has anything for me, let me know. Super Tenets report.
Okay, the, the state was happy to receive District Number Five's budget, so that's been submitted. Our audit is done. Normally, he sends us about twelve copies, one for every board member, but he said, "I don't wanna pay for twelve copies," so he gave us just three. Come check one out if you'd like to read the audit. Uh, the AFR obviously comes from that, which is a little more complicated, difficult to read, but anyway, the budget's been submitted, the audit for the last fiscal year is done.
Send the audit home with these two guys.
I mean, is there anything with the audit?
No, what did he find? The only thing that he did find was, oh, I see, you spent the money that we were spending on the elementary. Uh, we'll send up a red flag, the department did, because, did he say we should have amended?
Because we didn't, we should have amended the budget in August, because we didn't, we spent more than we budgeted, but that's also because we brought in more money. So, but we didn't show that in the original budget, so we should have amended it in August, so we'll probably get a...
We'll get a notice from NDE that says, "Hey, you know, be mindful of this." So I mean, I guess it, yeah, it was just, you know, something that we missed. That, because you, technically, you can't, you cannot overspend your budget. And we did, even though we had, you know, the funds coming in. They didn't count those funds that come in. They just kind of hit it, boy, you spent too much. So in hindsight, we could have held money over to September one.
And that was just in the building?
So, yeah, so Mike, the auditor said, "Okay, I mean, this is just something for you to be aware of for next time." Um, on our, our October professional development, our first Wednesday early out, we did our annual suicide awareness training for all staff. Uh, Mrs. Novick, you met with math teachers as well, and the crisis team met. We are planning a community disaster and active shooter and, and emergency response drill. We're gonna participate in along with local hospitals, EMTs, uh, law enforcement, first responders, medevac. We're, we're planning to have multiple EMT units here for multiple hospitals, two helicopters. Uh, we've got twelve kids that are lined up, parental permission to be gunshot victims. Uh, so we're gonna practice our lockdown and then evacuation procedures here. But then we're also providing victims for local EMTs to come in, triage, and actually, you know, full response. Uh, so that's gonna be quite a deal on Thursday, the eighteenth. Uh, we're gonna prep kids, we're prepping teachers, because they are, they're gonna go through the full makeup deal, and when our kids evacuate, um, they will see their, they will see some of their classmates as gunshot victims, and so, but we're gonna totally prep them. I mean, we're not trying to spring anything on anybody. But we do wanna try to, so it's, it's not as much for us to practice lockdown evac as it is honestly for uh, local hospitals and EMT and ambulance services to practice a mass casualty event. And in a small town, mass casualty events, they're gonna probably come to your school first and see if, you know, if we wouldn't participate in something like that, I'm sure.
What time of day is that?
It's gonna be two forty-five on Thursday, the eighteenth. We will prep families. It also gives opportunity for me to test our, our text message system. I've got about, I don't know, probably a hun, over a hundred families in the text message system, so they'll receive it immediately, because I'm not gonna have time to make a phone call on the Sunday night call thing. So, uh, multiple times, we will prepare families that this is a drill, this is a drill, this is a drill. We intend to come back here for our regular dismissal procedures. We thought about having a rally point, parent rendezvous, practice, you know, pick your kids up at the evacuation site. And we just, we decided we didn't wanna go through that right now. So we'll come back and just regular dismissal, even though they still may be triaging. And, uh, EMTs may still be, this, this street's gonna be blocked off, because we're gonna have ambulances lined up on that street, and they're gonna use these three hallways. That far hallway, this hallway, and that hallway. That's where all the, the victims are gonna be, so they're just gonna take, just for, for ease. We know it's not, you know, it could, uh... We're, we're not gonna have law enforcement clear the building. That part's not gonna be part of the drill. Chief Yosen just didn't wanna do that part. Plus, that also, your, your EMTs can't get in until the building's cleared, and that can take quite a while to clear the building uh, in real, in real time.
It will be state patrol, too?
But they will be part, state patrol could be. County, we expect. That's up to, Bruce was gonna set that up.
So this is gonna be the actual scene, right?
Yes, yes. These three hallways will be the scene for the mass casualties. There won't be any in the elementary. The elementary kids won't see this. They won't even know what's going on over here. The elementary's gonna go into lockdown, and then they're gonna evacuate to the library. They've done that before. They're gonna be there about twenty minutes. Teacher's gonna give a text from me, "All clear." You're gonna walk them back. They're gonna dismiss. But we are trying to be very aware of the emotional aspect of it, especially when our kids evac and, and see classmates. But that's on the eighteenth. I've got Mike and Vicky planning to go to state convention. We're staying at the same place downtown. Uh, you both have been to the convention before, so you know. Bob Evans and I went and had a meeting with Al Raji a couple of weeks ago. He was gonna order an appraisal of the building. This was only two weeks ago. I'd hoped to have it for tonight. We don't. I expect Bob to be here next week, or next month for this meeting. At that time, we should have the appraisal. We'll also have a little more info. I'm also inviting Al to come to this meeting next month. He is supremely interested in this idea. Uh, he is supremely interested in this idea of this project. More so than just the owner of a facility that we would consider for, uh, for auto mechanics and auto tech, uh, type of curriculum. So I think that'd be great if he would, if he would also come to the, no, we're in the meeting, but expecting Bob to be here, he was gonna bring in a couple of his folks to look at some of the things with regard to insulation and maybe some of the other resources that would be necessary, just to try to, you know, because it'll be November already, just try to start to piece things together, because honestly, uh, if this is conceivably a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year kickoff, uh, decision would need to be made by March, uh, so we, we do need to start moving on that, but, uh, Al was, was, we had just a terrific conversation, it was good for him to meet Bob, because in order for anything like this to happen, you have to have the right people in place and, uh, I certainly feel, and I hope you do as well, although it only mattered once, that, that Bob Evans would be the right person to, uh, get this started, get it every opportunity to be successful. Failure would not be an option, because it would be a, a big investment, so failing would not be an option, from my perspective.
On schools that do this type of program, is there a fee for the curriculum?
Just for materials, no.
Okay, I didn't know if they're.
We can't charge a fee, it's, it, it's free education.
But I didn't know if you, you know, like, they taught you once you maybe went through that course, you kinda got a certificate already, so I didn't know if you.
Yeah, Bob could answer that better, so if you're working towards some level of certification, uh, there might be a fee to that.
Let the schools come know.
If they, if kids come from someone, from another district, uh, we could rightfully charge, uh, expense.
The district, not the kid, the district.
We can charge the district, absolutely.
I, but when they take college course classes online or talent, whatever, they don't pay anything for that, do the students?
Yes, they do.
Oh, they do?
Yes, they do, they gotta pay for the credits.
Oh, they do?
Was this being similar?
Um, uh, uh, a certification level would be different than a college credit, certainly, but, uh, in some trades, it's more valuable than, than the college degree. So, you know, in our conversation with Al, I mean, he was very interested in what we would be teaching and how we, we would be teaching, because he can't find people to serve, uh, in, in his areas that he needs, just with, with regard to technology, just how much things change there, so, so he would be real interested in, in being part of some of those decisions in what we're gonna teach kids, and do we have the right persons, this, this gentleman, Bob, for example, does he have the skill set, uh, to teach the skills that kids can go straight from school to work? And it, it, it seems to be, it seems like we have the right people to make this work, uh, but the big pieces are the, the building and the expense to, the expense of personnel, uh, and facility, obviously.
Well, that and the number of kids that you're gonna get, you know, they mean cost per student, I feel like that five years interest.
Would be, would be probably massive initially, uh, until we get, until we build a program, gain interest and have large numbers of kids coming through.
Would it just be auto mechanics or would it be, could it be other areas?
It, it could conceivably be other things, including welding, but primarily within the auto industry, so, uh, the, the big part is digital technology is part of auto mechanics now. But yeah, there'd be simple things like changing oil and changing a carburetor, but also, uh.
Can you teach bodies, body work?
I don't think so, I don't think, I don't, no, that hasn't been part of any conversation that I've had with Bob, that there'd be all the body work. So we moved forward a little bit on that, again, in hope to maybe have those pieces in place for this meeting, but, uh, next meeting, next month, Bob will be here and hopefully, uh, Al would be here to answer questions.
One small concern I guess I have is the two guys that are out there, you know, if it ends up pushing them out.
Alan tends to bring them to Norfolk anyway.
Oh, really?
That's always been the plan, it's just, three years later and they're still here, but it's always been the plan to bring them to Norfolk. Okay, uh, wanted to share with you that I got a, an anonymous letter in the mail this week, okay, and I have no idea who it's from, but it says, Mr. Al, yesterday I was reminded of a time where, then forty years ago, that I worked in the front office at Plainview High School. I don't remember the details, but we took a small roll of tickets that were to be received, that were to be used for lunch, and we didn't pay for them. I know that it was a used roll, not sure how many tickets were in that roll or how much meals cost back then, but I'm hoping the money and clothes covers it. My sincere apologies, regards, a former student, P.S. co-pirates.
Forty years ago, you said?
Yeah, give you a dollar for every year, so put two twenty-dollar bills in, in this other. So that's pretty cool, it's never too late to do the right thing.
No.
That's what I'm gonna do. Okay, pay for a van. Uh, stuck it in the lunch account.
Yeah.
Stuck it in the lunch. There's our, uh.
There's our lunch account.
Yeah. Two meetings out of district on the twenty-seventh, hey, there's a new plaque on the wall, uh, by the phone, last payphone in Plainview, Nebraska, uh, Plainview Public Schools was one of eight schools in the state to receive wellness award, uh, for our efforts to increase staff wellness, because healthier teachers are better teachers, and better teachers is a primary goal for student achievement, uh, and, uh, our, our wellness program that runs through our Educators Health Alliance, uh, we, we have a massive number of teachers that participate in that on an annual basis and, and do a fine, fine, fine job and everything from physical health to, this, this one, this month's about happy feet, take care of your feet, take care of your feet, so they kinda put you through some things and you participate in it. But we were one of eight schools that was recognized in a, 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 Carney, uh, we got a nice little plaque from the lieutenant, but.
Probably more than we. More than we got for being number one in ACT test.
Wait to buy our own plaque.
Still, still waiting for some of those.
That was in the state, seven, seven out of state?
I think there were eight, there were a couple of different levels, but, yeah, and this is actually for, uh, it wasn't just a school thing, it was for all organizations that were covered by, uh, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Educators Health Alliance, so we were at this, we were at a, at a, a little conference and meeting with, you know, workers of every persuasion. So that was kinda a neat thing, all right.
I have a couple of questions, are you ready? Okay, uh, how's the morning advantage program going?
Chieftain, you mean?
Oh, chieftain, yeah.
Mrs. Novick would have been a better person to answer that, but as expected, as I kinda look at it every, every week, it's the same, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen kids generally who, uh, uh, who are struggling academically, so, uh, ev- from everything that I understand or, or see or hear, uh, which isn't much, which means it must be going as expected, because I'm not hearing kids, parents or teachers saying, this is really kind of, this pain in the whatever, it's not working, well, and it, it's not working, it's not an option either right now. What we will do, well, what needs to change then, uh, but I'm not, I'm not hearing that, so, uh, I like it, we, we've got a homework club that happens in here a couple nights, three nights a week. I, 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 I call it homework club, other people will call it advantage, because that's what it used to be, that's what it seemed like, but it's not for you, for kids to come in here, get homework done and go home. Without taking a book home, without doing homework, because we know that we have a lot of kids that need that, and once they go home, they're not doing homework, because it's just not an option.
Is that open to all?
It is, it is, only seven twelve.
Seven twelve.
Open for all kids, seven twelve.
Um, the other question is, I've, what, what's this, we're bringing in a piano or, or a, there's some just got about, I just wondered what.
Was that the paper?
Mrs. Kraus came to me and said, geez, this piano, you know, it's X amount of decades old, and I said, well, I've got ten thousand dollar budget for, that's not gonna come, well, I, I understand. She says, well, can we, can I talk to music boosters and see if we can have some campaign, I said, knock yourself out. So if there's somebody that, uh, feels strongly about that, that wants to support the purchase of a used, new to us piano, that would be in, uh, much better condition than our existing piano, I don't know anything about it. I don't know anything about a good, how, you know, how long the piano lasts, how many times you can tune it before, you know, uh, she's got here for that, so if she tells me it's really time to, to maybe prioritize this, I'm gonna support her in that.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, I just really wanted you to talk about it, so it would move in the paper.
Yeah, okay.
You know?
So when, when Brooke called me, uh, I just said, well, I, you know, I trust Mrs. Kraus, if she says we need to, you know, whether it's gonna happen this year or five years, the conversation needs to start. Uh, she did the research on, uh, what's he, a good used one, a certified used one, I don't know the terminology they use, so she did the research on that, uh, I said, I've, I've got a ten thousand budget, uh, I can put that to it, so that gets you maybe halfway there or whatever, if I remember.
Did she give any numbers, I, I have no clue, I've never.
She, yeah, she gave a range, it was, yeah, it was in the paper, uh, but it's upwards of twenty thousand dollars to start for a good, used baby grand. Baby grand piano, so, the big clavicle has been up and down on the stage, how many times or, you know, I, I, I don't know, once you retuned it, is it like new? I guess not. So we'll see where that goes, I mean, I haven't had much conversation beyond that, uh, when she came to me, I said, if you wanna go to music boosters, if they wanna commit something to it and try some, you know, if they have a fundraiser and they wanna put it towards that, that's fine, I don't see that as any different than, uh, sports boosters, generate some funds and put money towards the way.
Is there a return address on that guy that's sending you some money, maybe you can say, this isn't enough, we need a new piano?
I tried like if you had an Omaha stamp, dang it, if we would have had an Omaha stamp, we could have narrowed it down to Omaha, it's gonna be a little tougher.
Are your initials on the piano?
That's pretty cool.
Okay, I'll say something else, we are adjourned, thank you guys for coming. You have one more practice, two more practices, two more practices. You're gonna send out a text?
Yes, well, I got mail to everybody else today.
Yeah, I still need a text to remember.